Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee the whole to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum, and we have a number of items for discussion this morning. First is Public Improvement nine, three, five, three, the Airport Master Plan and Airport Layout Plan Update. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, your honor and council members. Yes, back in September, the City Council initiated Public Improvement nine, three, five, three. This is the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport Master Plan. They also accepted the state, excuse me, a federal grant offer for this project. Just recently, the state of Minnesota sent me the two companion grants for this project, because there's two of them, because both this federal share for this improvement consists of the airport improved AIP funds, which are our dedicated funds we get on an annual basis, and then some bipartisan infrastructure law funds as well, referred to as AIG. So there's two funding, federal funding sources, hence two state grant offers. It's a companion grant to match a five percent. The total estimate of project cost as presented was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred. Ninety percent of it is federally funded. The other five percent is state funded, which is consistent with the two state companion grants. And then the other is eighteen thousand, four hundred and ten is our local share from our local four fifty-six fund. So in order to start making draws on the federal grants, what I'm requesting is a resolution accepting state grant numbers one oh five, seven, six, seven, one, and one oh five, seven, six, two, eight, for Public Improvement nine, three, five, three.
Thanks, Brian. And we can move this to the council with a motion? Someone like to offer that?
I'm with you, your honor.
One second.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Jim. Questions for Brian?
I think would it just be important to kind of say that, you know, this is, yeah, I'm not one for kind of master plans and more kind of like things that sit in draw, but this is actually important to the airport status. This, you know, there is a potential that, you know, the airport could end up with a shorter runway, which would mean less funding from both federal and state. And this plan would help obviously put in place why we need the length of runway that we have. So it is actually an important plan for us to document and complete.
Thanks, Anthony. Any other comments or questions for Brian? All in favor of the motion to bring this to the council on Monday evening, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is the Airport Rescue Grant Program. And again, Brian Uvaro.
Yes, back in August twenty twenty-two, the City Council accepted an FAA grant offer. This was kind of a COVID relief funds. This was referred to as the Airport Rescue Grant Program. That was an amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. Because of the state of Minnesota, we have a Channel Act state, so the state of Minnesota is responsible to receive and disperse these federal funds to the local airports. So because of this, once again, I've also attached another companion grant. There is no cost, but it just authorizes this understanding between the state of Minnesota and the FAA, so we can make a draw against this program. Like I mentioned, it's amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. We're ready to submit the reimbursement through the state to close out this federal grant. So at this time, I'm requesting a resolution to accept state grant offer one oh five, seven, six, seven, five, for the Airport Rescue Grant Program. And I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Thanks, Brian. Someone like to move to bring this to the council?
Oh.
Thanks, Scott. Scott?
One second.
Rachel and Kwame? Questions for Brian? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have an update on the D-Goon Park improvements from Grant Cooper from Bolton and Mink. Good morning, Grant.
Good morning. Thanks, Mayor Shire, council members. Just going to give a brief update on the D-Goon Park project, both the campground improvements and the lighting. So last time I was here was May sixth, where you guys approved Compstock Construction's bid. And so since that meeting, right after that meeting, we went through and executed contract documents, and a notice to proceed was distributed to Compstock Construction on June sixth. On June twentieth, a pre-construction meeting was held where Compstock Construction provided a schedule for the project for the campground improvements. And on that schedule, they showed that they were going to start the week of August fifth, which they started some removals last week. They're doing some dirt work this week, and then utilities will start pending on weather slated to start tomorrow, but we'll see with rain what happens. Compstock's schedule shows all underground utilities, so the water main and sanitary sewer site grading, bathhouse installation happening this year, the twenty twenty-four construction season, and asphalt paving and turf establishment scheduled for twenty twenty-five. To note, the schedule submitted by Compstock Construction does not meet the completion date set forth in the contract documents. In the memo I have here, it shows the contract doc or contract completion date. So milestone one, November first, twenty twenty-four, the completion date for this milestone consists of having seating, meeting, acceptance throughout the project. Substantial completion was five, nine of twenty twenty-five, May ninth of twenty twenty-five. And this was essentially just for the last lift of pavement to be installed. And then final completion was July eighteenth of twenty twenty-five. And so between that May and July date is essentially, we call it punchless items, any kind of wrap-up items that need to take place to kind of get it to a point. But at the May ninth date, construction's supposed to be complete where the intended use of the project, it's supposed to be used as its intended purpose. And we were really intentional in selecting these dates. Our goal was to have the campground open for the twenty twenty-five season. So that's why having turf established is a big deal. When you're navigating a campground, you need to have grass. You don't want to be running around on mud or dirt. So we're intentional in selecting that date here in the fall of twenty twenty-four to have the turf established. So given the schedule submitted by Compstock Construction, it's unlikely the campground's going to be ready until at least July. We're July of twenty twenty-five. We're pinpointing kind of a date so that the city can understand when they're setting, when you guys are setting up your reservation software, when you can start taking reservations. So we're looking to target a date and working with contract to get that figured out. So there are mechanisms in the contract documents, though, that protect the city in these cases where a project is not completed by the contract dates. Liquidated damages provide the city the ability to realize financial and other losses if the work is not completed by the contract dates. In this scenario, damages could be, but aren't limited to lost revenue from the campground not being open in twenty twenty-five as anticipated. Bolton and Mink will closely monitor the contractor's progress and completion dates as defined in the contract. And we have notified Compstock that the city intends to enforce the liquidated damages in the contract. A quick update on the lighting. Again, at the May sixth council meeting, you guys approved two different quotes for both Farmers and Legion Fields for Otter Electric. They're currently procuring materials, and work will be conducted this fall and into winter with the improvements being completed prior to the spring twenty twenty-five season. So those will be functioning, ready for the twenty twenty-five season for the baseball, for both Farmers Field and Legion Field. So that's an update for both the kind of light, the whole project as both lighting and the campground improvement. So I'll open it up to any questions that you guys have.
Thanks for that update, Grant.
So what's caused the delay?
Compstock, what they have shared with me is that between the wet season and just other projects going on, and I guess my response is, you guys signed the contract that have these dates set forth. To be frank, I don't care about your other projects. It's kind of how I say it. But I'll note, too, we intentionally also had a bid retention date. We accepted bids for this project in late March. We had a bid retention date that took us into mid-May. So the city did nothing outside the contract when we navigated. We knew that we had to figure out some budget items to get everything to fit, all the pieces that are happening with the project out there between the lighting and the campground. So the city did nothing to break any sort of contract terms. And so you guys are in right standing right now. It's, the schedule's not just meeting the dates provided.
Thank you.
When we have projects that don't meet time, are those contracts, the damages clauses, are those pretty typical across projects and across cities and, you know, so?
Yes. Every contract that we write has liquidated damages, and it to protect for situations like this.
And they're pretty similar to other, the projects that are on time or have the same typical damages clauses?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Correct.
So we're not going for lower, like, not going for lower bids in order, you know, lower damages to get lower bids to throw the timing on?
No.
Just curious.
No.
Thanks, Grant. Scott?
Grant, would we have a way to arrange with Compstock for what you might call a phased opening? I mean, to have it open in July is maybe one thing, but could possibly a portion of it open earlier, and then the portion that's maybe less ready, open later? I mean, would there be any way to discuss some options that way with them, or is it just all or nothing?
We can certainly look into that. Yeah, I haven't thought about that, to be honest. We can certainly look into it and see if that's a possibility. I think the site grading, though, and seating could be a challenge, but it's certainly worth exploring. So that's something we can look into, yes.
Seems like if the plumbing and pads were in place, the RV sites could possibly be used if the bathhouse was ready. I can see where the tending would not work, you know, on dirt, but just thought that might be an option to at least get things started earlier.
Yeah. No, that's a good idea. We'll look into that and explore that option.
Jim?
What is, what's left for lighting on Legion Field? I thought that the lights had already been changed at the Legion Field.
No, the lights haven't been changed. That's just a retrofit still. So we were waiting for this season to wrap up before we did any work, because we didn't want to impact any play on the fields during the summer this year.
So that was just a retrofit on that, and okay.
Yep. Yep.
Even the retrofit is much better than what we had.
Yeah, it was just bulb replacement, actually. So those new bulbs will move over to Farmers Field with the fixture.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Scott?
One thing about the opening, and you and I have talked about this, Grant, is we need to get that grass established, because once you open, never, it's not going to get any better. It's going to take so much longer. And I just looked at the BMX track last night, and they opened up pretty quickly, and their grass is, it's just struggling to stay around. So I don't, you know, we got to try hurry up to open, but if we wait a little longer for the long haul, is what I think we're going to have to do. And I just don't see it opening at all next year. But it's, if everything's right, yes, it'll open. But it's get that grass condition, because once it opens, you know, nobody stays off the grass. We are on the grass. So that's just my opinion of it.
Yeah. I would also caution that, you know, I'm not necessarily against a phased opening, but we also got to consider that, you know, the liability of having people there while the contractor's there working, as well as, you know, this might let them off the hook in terms of liquidated damages. So I think we have to look at, like, what is the, what is also the value that we get?
Thanks, Anthony. Anything else, other questions for Grant?
Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Next, we'll call on our chief of public safety, Kyle Bergeren, to talk about emergency medical and rescue equipment.
Your honor, I think earlier this year, both Ryan and I came to talk to you. We had received a substantial amount of money through the state of Minnesota in a public safety grant. A lot of those monies have already been expended for the purchase of replacement radios. I think there was an SCBA compressor for the fire hall, just a lot of kind of high-priced items, you know, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Just recently, we've had a couple incidents where both us and the fire department have responded to, and it just kind of gave Ryan and I a chance to sit down and talk about some other things that we might need with our staff. And so before you, there's just a kind of a wide variety of things, from, you know, water rescue things to, you know, cardiac events, to motor vehicle accidents, to search and rescue type incidents, where there's some things that we need that, you know, aren't necessarily always the big ticket item. Some things might cost several thousand dollars. Some things might cost two dollars. But anyways, between us and our staff, we went through and just kind of made a list of things that we think we need. Between the two agencies, we're looking about twenty-two thousand dollars. And again, those monies would come from that public safety grant that we got from the state of Minnesota. So just asking for a resolution to approve the purchase of these items and go forward from there.
Thanks, chief. If we can do that through a motion to the council?
I'll offer that, your honor.
Thanks. Thanks, Jim. Laura, any questions for Chief Bergeren? Thank you, chief. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll call Michael Olson from the HRA to talk about, pardon, excuse me, the HRA levy request for two thousand and twenty-five. Morning, Michael.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council members. I provided a letter last week, and I imagine it's in your packets this morning, that our formal request for approval of our tax levy for twenty twenty-five operating funds. And within that letter kind of summarized the programs that were operating out of the Fergus Falls HRA, the number of units, the vacancy rates, the waiting lists. And, you know, I don't want to run, I guess, necessarily through that word for word. I think you've all had it in advance, and hopefully have had a chance to review. So I'm hopeful this morning that maybe you've, you've looked at that and have some questions that maybe I can run through and discuss a little bit about what we're doing here in Fergus Falls, who we're helping, et cetera. So.
Maybe, would you like to give us an update on Garrett's Grove?
Certainly.
How it's going? And, yeah, just give us.
That's a great place to start. So Garrett's Grove substantially was, construction was completed in January. We received our temporary certificate of occupancy, and we began leasing. Once we got staffed up with our case management, et cetera, our first tenants were in in about March. As of August, we have fourteen of the twenty-four units filled. We have two applications on our property manager's desks being reviewed now. Plans are to be eighty percent occupied by October, a hundred percent occupied by the end of the year. So it's a little bit of a slow process. Garrett's Grove is permanent supportive housing. We're working with tenants there. The access to that building is provided through the coordinated entry list. That list is managed by our community action group in town of Yattwa. And so folks who are experiencing homelessness, have a mental health diagnosis, have chemical dependency issues, oftentimes present themselves at an assessment site. Once they go through that interview process, if they meet the qualifications, they're placed on the coordinated entry list. And then there's work on placement into vacant units. So our case management crew is provided by Lutheran Social Services. They have two full-time case managers on site. And as we have vacancies, our LSS case managers take names from the coordinated entry list, do an interview. Once they get through that process, there's a recommendation made to property management. Property management goes through intake process, and then if everything works out, they're offered a lease into the building. So it's a, it's an interesting leasing process when you have folks who oftentimes are dealing with rapidly changing addresses. There's difficulties connecting. As those addresses change, phone numbers change, phones get disconnected, et cetera. So the initial lease up, to be completely honest, has taken a little more time than I expected. But I think the program is working as intended, and I think that the fourteen tenants that we have now are stably housed, and I think that's a very good thing for them. Thinking a little bit about the fourteen people who we have housed, just thinking about one in particular, during the interview process, she had informed us that she had six addresses in the last two months prior to leasing up with Garrett's Grove. And so I think the stability that this project provides for tenants like that is a good thing.
Thanks, Michael. Just a question for Bill and Andrew. The HRA levy request goes into the tax levy that ultimately is approved. Is that correct?
It's a separate tax levy from the city, so it goes on as a separate line. So what you approve for them, they submit to Otter Tail County, just like we do, as another taxing jurisdiction.
But the timeline on that, is it something that we do in conjunction with?
Yeah, it would be.
Typical?
The same process. So, yeah.
So September, December?
The council can approve it on Monday night, and then Michael has the obligation to follow that timeline.
Got it. Okay. Perfect. Scott?
You and I have spoken about this before, Michael and I role as the liaison to the HRA board. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. This request is consistent with what has been the case for years. This pattern or this method has been in place for a long time. The increase that you're asking for typically is essentially a result of the formula and the valuation of properties in Otter Tail County. It really doesn't have anything to do with what we as a city choose to do or not do. It's completely separate from any city request for this, that, or the other thing. It's all based on the value of property in Otter Tail County, correct? And in that case, I guess I think that this is a very valuable program for the city, for the county, and maintaining a steady, you know, budget for this is important for you to be able to continue this work. I think it was interesting in our conversation earlier how there's other places in the state where their property values are dramatically higher. And so following the same formula, they would be eligible for way, way more money, more than they need. And in this case, this amount of money is a part of your budget, but it's not all of it. Your budget is funded from more than one pocket. And so to get to the end of my question, then, this two-hundred-and-fifty-some thousand dollars is what portion of your total budget? Maybe I should have given you a heads up on that. Sorry about that.
Could I pull my audit report and get back to you with that, Scott?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
I didn't want to just throw a number and guess it, because I wasn't so sure offhand either. But I thought that it was, it's not anywhere close to being your full budget.
It's not. That's a, that's a good question and a fair question. Where my hesitancy on answering comes from is in my mind, I'm thinking more about the dollars that we receive for the providing of programs in Fergus Falls. And looking at the voucher program in particular, we provide more than a million dollars a year in direct payments to landlords in Fergus Falls. The administrative fees to come in for the management of that program are significantly less than that. And it's these tax levy funds that we rely on to kind of fill that gap between what the federal programming provides us for administration as a maximum allowable that they pay per voucher issued, as compared to, you know, really where the bulk of their support goes, which is providing that assistance to tenants.
And we could get that information on Monday night as well, if there's a, is there a motion to bring this to the council for approval? Thank you, Jim. Scott's second, and then, yeah, we can get that.
I have a question.
Yeah, please, Al.
Michael, I think it's been about a year ago or so since you had come and asked for some funds for extra staff, higher taxes. What, it was my understanding that Garrett's Grove is staffed by supervision twenty-four seven. Is that correct?
In our initial application, we had contemplated and had, I guess, in all honesty, we had projected that we would have twenty-four seven coverage at that building. Looking through the budget, visiting with our service providing staff, at this point, we have not hired that additional staff. And of course, I can see the positives either direction. I can see the benefits to having twenty-four hour staff in that building. And yet, looking at how we're operating the building, I would say at this point, even though the building is housing tenants who have had some housing stability issues, our case management crew and our property management crew have been able to operate that building like any other apartment building in town. We wouldn't, at this point, we wouldn't necessarily recognize that that building has a population that requires a higher degree of services. We haven't had an issue with tenants or behaviors that would indicate that we need to staff it beyond regular business hours.
I guess the question, the way I took it a year ago was that, you know, you needed funding for staffing when everybody else was short-staffed, including, you know, private business. But yet, there was tax dollar to go to this staff. Can you help me understand why that there was a call for service for the police department to keep an extra eye on the building? It had come to my attention that that was an issue, that I know there was one call for that. And so now the taxpayer is also looking at that issue to cover those extra fees if they have to keep an extra eye on that building. Whereas it was my impression that you were hiring for staff, it was supposed to be staffed constantly for your group to keep an eye on that. And then if there's an issue, to call for service, like any other place or any other citizen in town. I don't think it's a police department's issue to keep an eye on your building. And if you can shed any light on this, I would, I would really appreciate that, because it seems like you asked for staff or you needed extra staff. But yet, there's, you're asking for help. And, I mean, either you can confirm or deny that.
I think we have two, two separate items within that question. In last year's tax levy request, I had identified that we had a modest budget surplus identified as we walked through the process of looking at our levy request and looking at our total operating budget. And I had indicated in my request last year that with that surplus, we were investigating housing navigators or case management that we could hire at the Fergus Falls HRA that would not only be able to work with applicants and participants for HRA programming, but would also be available to citizens within Fergus Falls who were looking for those services, who needed some help with case management or needed some help with housing navigation. The budget that I prepared prior to the tax levy request last year was also prepared ahead of our meetings with Lakes Country Service Co-op to see what health insurance costs we're doing for the year, and some other items. And unfortunately, those surpluses that were identified were quickly consumed just by the rising costs of doing business. So unfortunately, hiring a housing navigator at the HRA didn't work out last year like I had hoped. Separate to that, and looking at our application to Minnesota Housing for Funding to Construct Permanent Supportive Housing a couple of years ago, and looking at the business plan that we had put together for that project, we had originally identified that that property would have, we designed the building to have twenty-four seven coverage. We've got a front desk there. We've, that was, there's no doubt that I said that publicly. It was written into our application. It was my anticipation that we would have twenty-four seven staffing in that building. And as of today, we do not.
That's what I was getting at. And, you know, when something is said and another thing is done, that's difficult for me. And I think it's difficult for those of you, those who are paying a tax levy. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it would be worth just to know, I know Michael didn't read kind of all of this, but how many people are on waiting lists for the varied properties? You know, I mean, at Timber Place, there's only twenty units, and there's twelve people on that waiting list. You know, at Riverview Heights, there's basically about seventy units, and there's, you know, seventy people on that waiting list. And, you know, on the voucher program, as Michael mentioned, you know, they've distributed a million dollars of obviously state money, you know, to support those housing. And there's, you know, at least another three hundred people on the waiting list. So the work that they are doing is stabilizing a lot of, a lot of people.
Thanks, Anthony. I agree. I think there's a lot of, clearly, those numbers you and that Michael provided indicate that there are definitely a need for the services that the HR is providing. Citizens definitely are in need of those services. So thank you for that. Any other questions? We have a motion to bring We have a motion to bring this for approval to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Last item on our agenda is a charter communications franchise ordinance, and we will call on our City Administrator, Andrew Braxton. Good morning, Andrew.
Yeah, good morning, Your Honor. Council members, hard to believe we're already talking about a renewal for this. We put it in place in two thousand and sixteen, and it's a ten-year contract. Can't believe that's ten years, nearly ten years ago already, so. Charter Communications has had a franchise in the city of Fergus Falls for many decades. It's a non-exclusive franchise, which means anybody that wants to compete in the market has the ability to do that. We have agreements in place with Charter and Park Region right now to provide these services, and if another company wanted to come in and invest in the infrastructure to provide that service, you as a council would have the ability to allow that because these are all non-exclusive. So I just want to set the stage with that. Charter has been very proactive. They got a new government relations person who's been very good to work with. Last time, I think this actually expired and had to be put in place because it took so long to get it done in two thousand and sixteen. They reached out real late in the game, and then also there was a major overhaul to the franchise agreements in two thousand and sixteen. They were front-to-back reviewed, marked up, changed, and there was a lot of moving parts. And when you have corporations involved and attorneys involved, you know how that can slow things down a little bit? So in all honesty, since those changes in two thousand and sixteen, there haven't been any issues that we've had with any of these franchisees, and they have just a few minor things that they're asking to change for the extension, which would go then through November of two thousand and thirty-six, and those are in your packet. They're currently in the form of a resolution. That'll be an ordinance form for your approval. We do have a provision in the city charter that requires any franchise agreements, whether they're new or extensions, to be done by the ordinance process, and they also require a public hearing, so the public has the ability to weigh in on that. Which is basically what the action I'm requesting today is to move this forward to Monday night to introduce it as a first reading of an ordinance. And again, that ordinance will just be amending those five sections which are listed in your packet. They're very minor changes, which both role and city staff have reviewed. I've asked clarifying questions on those, have a comfort level with that. And then the other part of my request this morning is to set that public hearing for September third. That's our first council meeting in September at five-thirty P.M. That'll be properly noticed in accordance with the charter, and the public will have the ability to weigh in. If acceptable, like I mentioned, this extension would then be in effect until November of two thousand and thirty-six, and again, that can be done via a ordinance process. I will say real quickly, there is really no budgetary impact other than the cost of publication. There is, Charter still does pay, and so does Park Region. These are uniform. They pay a three percent on their gross revenues fee, which is what is used to fund our peg access station and programming, and that will be unchanged for the ten-year term. So they're, they're, they have no issue with that. The collection has been coming in timely, and, you know, as, it's been relatively stable all things considered, with subscribers to cable television dropping as prices kind of slightly increase. It's kind of, because it's a percentage rather than a dollar amount per customer, it's kind of stabilized a little bit, and we haven't seen it free-falling like it may be anticipated. But that's where we're at.
Thanks, An, Andrew. And we can move this to the council for a first reading on, on Monday night?
I'll lay that, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Anthony, thank you. Scott? Question, go ahead, Scott.
As we've had some conversations about things with the name franchise fee in them over the last year or so, it was my impression that the Charter and the other cable, Park Region others were paying a franchise fee. That's the way we talked about it, but apparently that maybe needs some clarification in the definition. What they've been paying is that peg access fee, but not apparently a franchise fee.
Yeah.
So how, how can we clear up that definition a little bit?
Yeah, I asked him that question as well, and, and it's essentially the same thing, just in the telecommunications world, the term is slightly different, so they, I, I'm using the term peg access fee. They maybe call it something even slightly different, but it's in essence a franchise fee. It just doesn't meet the definition of franchise fee in this particular world. So it's, it's, as I was talking to the individual from Charter, he says it's literally the same thing. We just use different definitions in the FCC world or whatever, as opposed to the utility world. So I don't know that anybody needs to be too caught up on that. That's, that's, it's terminology. Same thing, same mechanism, just terminology.
Thank you.
The other thing I'll add, Your Honor, I forgot to mention just real quickly, the Park Region franchise will also be on a similar timeline, so I anticipate you guys will see that within the next year or two. So it shouldn't be too much of a surprise, but they both were approved in two thousand and sixteen and are set to expire in two thousand and twenty-six. And like I said, this is very aggressively proactive. I think they were going to try to avoid the, the issue we had last time, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Andrew. There's a motion to bring this to a first reading on Monday evening. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. That's all the agenda items that I'm aware of. Lynn, do you have anything for the good of the order? All right, we're adjourned.